Out of the line right now.
You have the indication.
All right.
Counsel, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Counsel, are you ready?
Yes.
Staff, are you ready?
Yeah.
Staff, are you ready?
Everything can work.
We're gonna start without you, staff.
Don't worry. Going to the, uh, there's a balance here before walk through.
All right, I'm gonna call to order this Kerrville City Council meeting for April 22nd, 2025. Let's all rise for the Intention E. Pledge led by Councilmember Jeff Harris.
You will please bow your head with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with gratitude in our hearts. We thank you for the gift of this community and the opportunity to serve one another in love and unity. We lift up the leaders of Kerrville, Kerr County, our city staff, and all who worked to guide this city with wisdom, integrity, and compassion. Bless us all with discernment and strength as we work through this meeting tonight. Lord, we thank you for the gift of rain and the chance of more that's to come. Your provision for the land and all who depend on it. It is a reminder of your faithfulness of care in creation. We give thanks as well to our first responders, those who protect and service day and night. Grant them safety, courage, and peace in every challenge they face. We also remember our military service members near and far, whose sacrifices uphold the freedoms we enjoy. Surround them and their families with your protection and your grace. May your peace rest on this meeting, and may all that is said and done here bring honor to you and blessing this city we all call home. In your holy and heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunius.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody tonight. We have a couple of events coming up over the next two Saturdays at the library, and we're gonna start it this Saturday with, if you're interested in improving your creative writing skills, retired Toronto University Professor and author Dr. Kathleen Hudson will be leading a creative writing program, and that starts at 10:30 on Saturday morning, this coming Saturday. It's an hour and a half, 90 minutes. Great opportunity to kind of get some tips on creative writing. So we encourage everybody to come out for that. We do ask if you can to register in advance because it helps us figure out how many people are gonna be there, but keep that in mind for this Saturday. And then next Saturday, it's really story time for kids. Big trucks, we'll have trucks from the fire department, the street department, and K-Pub. We did this last year, and it was a big hit. The kids really enjoy climbing all of those trucks. We did not do the siren, but some of those trucks have some pretty loud horns that we set off, so bring them out next Saturday, and that's another good time. I believe that starts at 2:00 in the afternoon, so keep both those in mind. Another event this coming Saturday, finally, we've talked about it for the last two or three meetings in a row, but the 75th anniversary of Louise Hayes Park. We'll celebrate that starting at 9:00 on Saturday. Goes from 9:00 to 1:00. You can see the event details up there. 9:00 Farmer's Market, Craft Tent, the exhibit booth is open. And 9:30, Mayor, you're up to make a few comments. 10:30, we'll have performances from local big-seat authors, I mean artists, excuse me, and then at 11:45, Landon Lloyd Miller will be on stage. So a lot of fun that day. Come on out. 75 years, that was what, 1950? Pretty impressive.
This schedule implies that I'm gonna talk for an hour, which is not true.
And one more activity going on this weekend. If you have some prescription drugs that you wanna unload, don't throw them in the trash, don't put them down the toilet, bring them by the Kerrville Police Department. That's on Sidney Baker. They'll be there from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. collecting them. They do that, do you do that twice a year? Twice a year, so if you need something that you wanna get rid of, bring that by. And then police, KPD is also taking applications right now for the Junior Citizen Police Academy, which will start Monday, June 2nd, and run through June 6th. And that's always a great opportunity for kids to understand how our police department works. So if you know somebody that might be interested in doing that, check in. I know they're glad to have you, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. And that's my comments. Turn it over to you.
Any other announcements? Yes, Mayor?
I'm just gonna let you know that coming up in October, we're working with the Parks and Recreation Department to come up with an event downtown. It's called the Water Street Festival, October 25th. This is kind of a coordination between the city and the Main Street Board, and we're gonna have a kids' parade hopefully, and all kinds of vendors and art and music. This is mainly to kind of support and promote the downtown businesses that are already there, but there will be some nonprofits there. This is October 25th from 10:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
This Friday at 8:00 at the Hill Country Veterans Center at 411 Meadowview from 8:00 to 9:30, it's the Veterans Breakfast. We do it twice a year, so please, if you know a veteran, invite them. Please come out and celebrate veterans and come have breakfast. So that will be again Friday at the Meadow, 411 Meadowview Veterans Center.
Mr. Harris reminded me that I failed to adjourn our workshop, and so I also failed to report that we took no action in executive session. So if we could pretend that I did that earlier. No, the workshop is adjourned. Sorry, I forgot to do that. All right. Next item on this agenda is presentations, and we'll start off with our chief, Eric Malone.
Good evening, Counsel. Mr. Mayor, tonight I want to take an opportunity to recognize three of our Persons of the Year that were recognized back in February during our awards ceremony. First, I'd like to start off by recognizing Firefighter of the Year Katie Roberts. So Katie, if you will, come forward. So I know she's all, well, we'll walk up in a second. So I have the honor to recognize Katie Roberts as Firefighter of the Year. Katie was hired in May of 2022 and previously served with the Kyle Fire Department for four and a half years. She's credentialed as a paramedic, EMS coordinator, Texas Commissioner on Fire Protection Intermediate Structure firefighter, driver pumper and aerial operator, basic wildland firefighter, intermediate fire inspector, fire instructor, and fire officer. She's a field training officer that serves on the wildland response team. Katie also served eight years with the U.S. Coast Guard Reserves as a marine science tech. She was nominated for her exceptional contributions to our department, both professionally and personally, have made a profound impact on her fellow firefighters and paramedics. She served on the Mental Health and Wellness Task Force and tirelessly advocated for the mental and physical well-being of our team, showing incredible leadership and compassion. She researched peer support group policies and the emergency or the employee assistance program for a public safety licensed professional counselor. Additionally, her dedication to improving our fire operations is evident with her leadership in ensuring the transition from our standard inch-and-three-quarter hose crosslays on each fire engine to a more efficient, called the Minuteman load. This was a monumental task that she took the initiative to research, collect real-time data, record videos of the crew pulling both loads, and presented a proposal that has positively influenced our efficiency and readiness. One of Katie's most genuine qualities is her commitment to sharing her extensive knowledge in firefighting, EMS, and even administrative tasks. Katie continues to lead and represent the Kerrville Fire Department with her positive impact on the current and future firefighters and paramedics. She upholds our core values of professionalism, integrity, commitment, and teamwork. These are few, but Katie Roberts outstanding qualities and traits that earned her the 2024 Firefighter of the Year.
Do you have family here? Do you have some family here? Bring your family in, please.
I know. Not in Europe.
Yeah, no, he didn't want to. He had to get approval.
Keith, can we get you in here too?
Sure.
I'll let him take his. Okay, we can get him over here too. All right, one, two, and three, and one more, one, two. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Take the hand with. Can I have anything you'd like to say?
Next, I would like to recognize EMS Person of the Year Scott Parsley. Scott, if you'll come on forward. I have the privilege to recognize Scott Parsley as the EMS Person of the Year. Scott was hired as a paramedic in February 2021, but that is far from the beginning of his career. Scott is credentialed as a paramedic, Texas Commissioner on Fire Protection Master Structure firefighter, serves as a field training officer, and earned an associate's in fire science technology. He grew up in San Angelo and even spent time working at Shandong Memorial Emergency Department, and he spent the majority of his career with Yulis Fire Department and Keller Fire Rescue in the Dallas area, with a short period at Westlake Fire EMS Department. He's worked as a paramedic in California, Afghanistan, and Saudi Arabia. So he has served as a paramedic longer than probably most of our fire department members are alive. Scott was nominated for consistently going above and beyond to mentor and teach the next generation of paramedics. He always shows patience and willing to share his experiences and knowledge to ensure his fellow paramedics get guidance and experience. He treats all patients with the utmost respect and empathy regardless of the situation. He has a calm demeanor, especially in chaotic situations. As the first medical on scene, he's always stays cool under pressure. He shows pride in the department with his passion for EMS as something to recognize for others to achieve. His dedication is exemplified with his knowledge as a paramedic, field training officer, and decades of experience. Scott has a positive and professional attitude that earn the respect of his fellow peers. He demonstrates our mission statement of exceptional team, efficient methods, and excellent service. These are just a few of Scott Parsley's outstanding performance and merits that earned him the 2024 EMS Person of the Year.
Thank you.
A new kid because as the oldest of paramedics in the fire department, so Scott has served as a paramedic longer than I have, over a year, so a few more than I have, so. So Scott, if you'll shake.
Congratulations.
I was gonna ask, so what's possible?
I think it's a long story.
This is the only place I sit, besides HUB.
And last but not least, I'm honored to recognize Lieutenant Casey Goodman for two special awards. Casey was hired as a firefighter/paramedic in November 2012 and previously served with Alamo Heights Fire Department and San Angelo Fire Department. He promoted to the rank of driver in 2015 and lieutenant in May of 2021. Casey's credentialed as a licensed paramedic, master structure firefighter, fire instructor III, driver pumper operator, fire officer II, incident safety officer, incident commander, basic fire investigator, basic wildland firefighter, and basic aircraft rescue. He graduated with a Bachelor's of Applied Arts and Sciences in Fire and EMS Services Administration and a Master's Degree from the Executive Master of Public Service and Administration from Texas A&amp;M. He serves on the Safety Committee and is a field training officer, earned the Firefighter of the Year in 2020 and the Officer of the Year in 2023. Casey is a proven leader that is fair and encourages everyone at every rank. His passion for the job and crew are evident with his mentorship and leadership. He mentors new firefighters and paramedics to complete their taskbooks and sets the bar for training his crew and the department as a field training officer. He's admired by his fellow colleagues for his leadership and dedication to the Kerrville Fire Department, and he has a passion for the fire service and EMS to leave the department better than we found it. On July 1st of 2024, Casey Goodman was off duty, and he left the house on the way to work. When driving around the corner on Highway 173 out by Comanche Trace, he noticed white smoke from a major head-on accident involving two trucks. He quickly assessed the scene and found two members of the Holden family trapped inside the vehicle. Tragically, the other driver passed away from the accident. The other vehicle started to catch fire within a few feet of the Holdens. He attempted to use his fire extinguisher on the fire with no luck. Both the driver and the backseat passenger were still trapped, as Casey was unable to extricate them without the rescue tools. Working with a family member, they tried to separate the trucks using chains with no luck. With the firing intensifying, Casey's quick thinking strategically placed scaffolding walkboards to shield the fire from the Holdens. Upon Engine 3's arriving on scene, Casey grabbed the hose, quickly extinguished the fire. The Holdens were safely extricated and now on the road to recovery. The outcome would have been very different without Casey's quick actions and willingness to go above and beyond the call of duty. Casey's selfless acts of courage and bravery to respond to the call forever changed the lives of the Holden family. The Citation of Valor is awarded to a member who under hazardous conditions has exhibited personal courage in an effort to rescue or protect another, save a life, or prevent a substantial loss of property. Lieutenant Casey Goodman's outstanding leadership values earned him the 2024 Officer of the Year, and his selfless actions is why he earned the Citation of Valor.
Appreciate everything. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
No, I appreciate my support and I'm thankful to be in Kerrville to affect my community. So I grew up here and I plan to stay here as long as I can.
All right. I understand the park is turning 75. Let's meet down the front. Ready for Saturday?
Ready.
Good, good, good. All right, I have a proclamation, City of Kerrville. I know y'all put in a ton of work already, so thank you. Whereas Louise Hayes Park was established in 1950 as a dedicated public space in the heart of Kerrville, Texas, and has since become a cherished landmark of natural beauty, recreation, community spirit. And whereas for 75 years, Louise Hayes Park has served as a gathering place for residents and visitors alike, hosting countless family outings, cultural events, festivals, and celebrations that enrich the lives of all who experience it. And whereas, the park stands as a testament to the vision and generosity of the Hayes family and others who recognize the importance of preserving green space for our future generations to enjoy. And whereas, continuous improvements and thoughtful stewardship have helped maintain the park's legacy, including the addition of walking trails, river access, playgrounds, and public art that make it a vibrant and inclusive destination. Whereas, this milestone anniversary promotes an opportunity to reflect on the park's enduring legacy in the community and to celebrate the positive impact it continues to have on quality of life, wellness, and civic pride. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring Jr., Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2025, as 75th anniversary of Louise Hayes Park, and encourage all residents to participate in the festivities as we recognize and celebrate this momentous occasion in the history of Kerrville, honoring its past and embracing its present and inspiring its future. So thank you very kindly. Thank you. I would like y'all to say a few words if you would. Tell us what's happening Saturday.
Saturday, we have an event on Saturday, as Stuart mentioned. Hopefully, we get to see your smiling faces down in the park. We have lots of fun stuff programmed and planned for the day, honoring the legacy. I think that's really important. We received a designation this year, the Lone Star Legacy Park Designation from Texas Recreation and Parks Society, and so we're very excited about that designation that'll live with Louise Hayes Park forever.
Thank you. Anything to say? All right, let me say this. That park is not a static place that rose up in April 1950 and nothing else was ever done. It takes constant care. Every time I'm in the park, I see someone from your department at work, keeping it clean, keeping it loaded, making sure everything is working. And so on behalf of myself, my family, the council, and all of Kerrville, thank you for all you do to make that a wonderful park for everybody. Thank you, very kind of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Forty-five minutes, right?
Yes.
Joe, weren't you at the opening?
I was. I was 15 years old. No, Kent, I wasn't. All right. You know, when I come in and out of the City Hall, I always stop to say hi to the City Secretary's office because they're full of cheer and they're so knowledgeable. So if I could have both Shelley and Keisha join me up here, we have a proclamation for them. It may surprise you, but I've been practicing how to pronounce their names. I'll get a grade here in a minute. This is a proclamation of the City of Kerrville. Whereas, the profession of Texas municipal secretaries essential to the effective functioning of local government in Texas, ensuring transparency, accountability, and the smooth operation of municipal services. And whereas, Texas municipal secretaries have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality while serving as the professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, Texas municipal secretaries serve as the official record keepers managing vital documents, conducting municipal elections, not this year. Providing legislative support and ensuring compliance with laws and regulations. And whereas, Texas municipal secretaries demonstrate exceptional dedication, professionalism, and integrity in their work. And whereas, Municipal Secretaries Week provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate invaluable work of municipal secretaries, acknowledge their vital contributions to public service, and the important day-to-day operations of cities. And whereas, it is fitting that the City of Kerrville take this opportunity to honor and thank Shelley McLehman and Keisha Francino. For their ongoing dedication, knowledge, and tireless service. Now therefore, I, Joe Herring Jr., Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th, 2025 as Kerrville City Secretary Week. I was happy to assign this for you guys. So thank you.
I am very honored to serve as the City Secretary for the citizens, the council, administration, and all my coworkers. I thoroughly enjoy working for the city.
Thank you.
Well, we're honored to have you.
And Keisha, any word?
Just piggyback off that. But this is our home, so of course I'm glad to be here and to work for our community.
It's always a pleasure visiting the public. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
I'll make sure I've been saying it right all these times.
Okay.
Thank you for all you do.
Both of you.
Sorry, we hogged them.
Yeah, you did.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
All right, that's great. Ellie, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Karen Guerrero. Guerrero, I'm sorry.
Guerrero, come up to the mic room, please.
Fight for names.
Wherever's easiest for you. That'd be great. Please state your name and address for the record.
Karen Guerrero, 307 Lakewood in Kerrville. Good evening, Mayor and Council and City staff. I'm here with Kerrville Pets Alive, and I'm here just to give you an update about what we're doing lately. We're still an all-volunteer, can you hear me? I feel like I'm shored up here. Is that better? Okay. I didn't put on my tall shoes. We're still an all-volunteer nonprofit organization, serving Kerr County. Our mission is to save Kerr County pets from euthanasia. We do that by providing resources and funding to Kerr County Animal Services, our county animal control, as well as Kerr County pet owners. We recently reported to the Kerr County Commissioners seventeen thou, over $17,000 in donations for medical care for the pets at Kerr County Animal Services. Most of those pets there impounded are from the city. We also donated about $1,200 in vaccines and equipment, and we have given over 1,000 hours, this is for the first quarter of the year, in volunteer service to the shelter and our clinics. Speaking of clinics, I want to thank the city again for their support of our snip-and-chip clinics, which are spay, neuter, vaccine, and microchip clinics. We've had a few of those so far. We've already vaccinated and spayed and neutered 50 pets, and we have four more planned. I'd like to encourage anyone that's low income, that would like to have their pet fixed, to reach out to us. We haven't had a huge turnout, and hopefully that means that there's so many that are already fixed that they don't need it, but we do have some spaces available. You can find out on our website that information. I'm excited that we have worked with the city to, and the big fix, to kind of collaborate and come up with a feral cat community caretaker agreement or form or registration. And that's something that we're kind of refining right now, but it's our way of addressing the community cat, feral cat issue in the community and creating a healthy and safe environment for residents. Another exciting thing is we have formed an interdisciplinary team for animal abuse, which involves law enforcement, Kerr County Animal Services, Kerrville Pets Alive, the District Attorney's Office, just to identify some cases because we feel like that animal abuse and people abuse, they go hand in hand, and so we're gonna work together to try and identify those. We are starting our capital campaign soon for our new safe campus, which will be at 2926 Memorial Boulevard. That'll be our permanent home, and I look forward to giving out information about that. And let's see, the last thing I want to say is Furball. We just announced Furball. That's our big fundraiser. It's on December the 6th, and we're selling tickets now and sponsorships, and that information's on our website as well. And that's how we do what we do, is through Furball. So I encourage everybody to attend, make plans for December the 6th. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, ma'am.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Is anyone else signed up? No?
No, sir.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. However, because the Consent Agenda has so many ordinances on it, after I ask if anybody would like to have anything removed, Shelley would need to read in those ordinances. So these items are considered routine and can be removed by any member of council or any member of the audience. Would anybody care to remove any item from the Consent Agenda?
I would like to remove E and F, please.
E and F. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else? All right. That leaves 4A through D and 4G. Of those, four of them are ordinances, so would you mind?
Okay, and we do have a citizen speaker who wishes to speak on 4A.
4A?
4D and 4E.
All right, 4D and 4E.
And I can go ahead and read those ordinances in.
You don't mind?
Thank you, sir. Ordinance number 2025-07, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas. Such chapter commonly known as the City Subdivision Code by amending various sections of the code, including sections regarding the platting process and adding a requirement for a certificate of assured groundwater rights and providing other matters related to the subject. This ordinance was approved unanimously on first reading April 8th, 2025. 4B, ordinance number 2025-09, second reading, an ordinance changing the zoning of an approximate An ordinance changing the zoning of an approximate .94 acre property, generally located adjacent to and north of Travis Street and between its intersection with Park Street and South Street, consisting of lots 1R, 2 through 5, 6R, 7R, 8 through 10, 11R, and 12R, from a single residential, excuse me, single-family residential zoning district R1 to a medium-density residential zoning district R2, and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance was approved unanimously on first reading, April 8th, 2025. Ordinance 4C, ordinance number 2025-10, second reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-22, which created a planned development district on an approximate 264.22 acre tract of land, generally located southeast of the intersection of Farmer Market Road 783, Harper Highway, and Interstate 10, and adjacent to and north of Holdsworth Drive. This amendment to revise the previously adopted concept plan and land use table to revise the descriptions of land uses and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance was approved unanimously on first reading, April 8th, 2025. 4D, ordinance number 2025-11, second reading. An ordinance deleting Article III electioneering and other conduct at polling locations of Chapter 70 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, containing a cumulative clause containing the savings and severability clause and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance was approved unanimously on first reading, April 8th, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. If it's okay with the council, I think we'll hear from the citizens who've signed up on the various items. What I understood, we have a citizen sign up for 4A, 4D, and 4E. Let's start with 4A.
George Burdi.
Mr. Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So forgive me, I didn't watch the video of the first reading, so my questions you may have already answered, and I'm sorry about that. But so the subdivision code just kind of had a question. I tried to figure out what the reason for this certifying, the, what do you call it? Certificate of Assured Groundwater Rights. So my question is, if they're in the city limits, why are they having to prove that up? Or what is this really actually doing? I didn't understand, sorry. And then, I don't remember what section that was in, but Section 5. I just wanted to clarify, because I thought there were changes being made, but if I'm reading it right, it's not really changing much. So it's all about plat recording and the public improvements that are tied to the project, the development project. So my question is, both before and after these modifications, is it true that a plat is not supposed to be recorded unless either the public improvements were completed prior to recording or the, prior to plat application, they would have created a, what do you guys call it? Improvement agreement that allows them to defer some things as long as they put up a bond? So I guess my question is, is that, is that those steps being changed in this? Or is that the same before and after? Does that make sense?
You've asked a lot of questions. Would you mind summarizing those questions?
Yeah, so this, the first one was just the water, the groundwater rights. What's the purpose of requiring that? The second one was, when you file a plat and you're going to do a development, right now, I think, before you can record the plat, you have to either build out all the public improvements or essentially put up a bond saying that you will build the improvements before it's actually open. So before these changes and after these changes, is that still correct? Or that didn't change, right?
Right, are those all your questions?
Yeah, that was it. That was it. I mean, it was just--
Mr. Paxton?
So the requirement for groundwater is to just, for the staff to be able to verify when a property is developing, do they own the groundwater rights? Not that they're specifically transferring those rights to the city, but are we making sure that that section of groundwater is not going to be sold to another entity since we're using our water system? And relating to the deferral of public infrastructure, the amendments are just moving the funding requirement from an application requirement to a recording requirement. So it'll still be required to either provide security prior to recording and then build the infrastructure, or build the infrastructure prior to recording of the plat.
Thank you. Any other citizen speakers on that item?
No, sir, the next one will be 4D.
Let's go to 4D, the citizen speaker.
And I must apologize, I don't know if you are showing any issues of the software, but it's not working correctly. So yeah, we're just going to do it by manually, I guess.
Got it.
George Burdi.
Mr. Burdi, on 4D.
I still live at the same place. So this one is about the electioneering, and I'm just trying to kind of clear up some of the, I'll just call it spin, because it appears to be spin from the agenda bill. This is one of those ordinances that the body and the citizenry spent better part of two years to sort of develop, tweak, whatever we did. And over a bunch of objections that had nothing to do with anything other than some people thought it was maybe unconstitutional, blah, blah, blah. We were told, comfortable with that, we're just going to go forward with it. And ta-da. And then, when it was challenged in a court, we just kind of quickly pulled back a little bit of it. By appearances, it appeared that it was being pulled back because there was admission that the things that are being pulled back were likely going to be struck down. So don't know if that's the case, doesn't really matter. Then we move forward, and I guess this court case is still going on? I have no idea. But I know that a decent part of both the electioneering and then, I guess it was the peddler's license thing. We're kind of gutted a little, I would say gutted, characterize it however you want. A lot of the, the things that were being stood on in this ordinance were being taken away. And now, after all of that, we're being told that this ordinance is being removed, not because they're being told to, not because of anything other than we're just going to look for, maybe, maybe look for a different place to hold elections since this ordinance was written aimed at a specific space. We're just going to pull it back until we determine where we're going to go. It seems a little disingenuous to characterize it that way. It would have been, I think, a little more upfront and honest to say, we think we might be having this ordinance struck down, we don't know. And to preempt potential decisions, we're just going to pull it back right now and rethink this. Because that's what it looks like outside. And because the way the agenda bill is written, it's saying we're pulling it back, and we're going to look for another place to hold elections. We may hold them at Calu, we may not. And then we'll revisit and we'll bring back another one of these ordinances. Why are we pulling it out if we haven't actually identified another election place? It seems a little strange. So like I said, I'm not looking for an answer because I'm not asking a question. I'm just sort of saying what people are thinking out here. The way it looks is that we had an ordinance that was faulty at best, and we wasted a lot of everybody's time pushing it through, and now we're just pulling it back unceremoniously. So, thank you.
And the last one will be for 4E, who, Councilmember McKinney did pull.
Correct. Who's the citizen speaker?
George Burdi.
Mr. Burdi, 4E. Have you moved since last?
No, I think I'm still in the same spot, although I'm looking. So this one I spoke on yesterday at EIC. And just to clarify, one of the responses from Mr. Harris didn't actually address what, I'm thinking the person sitting next to him was clarifying for him. I use the term qualifying the buyers. And in terms of affordable housing, in terms of this particular affordable housing, qualifying the buyers is really meaning that the buyer fits under the income limits that are being applied. And it has nothing to do with a lender qualifying them as able to borrow the money. So that's just one clarification. And the main gist of what I was trying to say is that this contract is disregarding an EIC mandate, which is they have a specific list of project types. And unless it's explicitly granted, EIC does not have the authority to fund projects other than those project types. And contrary to what the legal department said yesterday, I have never had conversations with the legal department directly. I've talked with the body, and they have said their responses, but I've never had a conversation with them. And this particular agreement references a project type that very clearly says it's permissible. TML even reinforces this with their description of it. It is a permissible project type as long as it's for affordable housing that is described by a federal code. And that federal code requires income limits to be at no more than eighty percent of AMFI. The reason I was standing up yesterday and the reason I'm standing up today is not to get you to change the contract, although that would have been nice if you hadn't written it more compliant, but to reiterate what I've already said to Ms. Campana about from Habitat, which is as long as they pursue the buyers the way they intend to, they would be compliant with the EIC laws. If they fall into the trap of qualifying buyers at the level of which the agreement says, they would not be. Now, she's assured us that they will. I have no doubt that they will, because it's their mission to attack, to go after people that are income limited at eighty percent of AMFI. If they do that, then everything's all good, there's nothing wrong anywhere, no violations occurred. But if they slip out of it, the contract is implying that they're going to be okay, and they won't. So my suggestion is for some of you all to take the time to call the Texas Economic Development Corporation and ask them the question about the use of, the allowable use and what's required using 505.153 of the Texas Local Government Code, so that you don't get yourself in this trap the next time, because we're exposed. So, thank you.
All right, we have no other citizen speakers on consent agenda items?
Yes, sir.
I would like a motion on all items except 4E and 4F, please.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items number 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, and 4G.
For a second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, so vote. All right, passes unanimously. 4E, Mr. Hornis.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were at 4F. 4E, would you like, what would you like to talk about? So--
I just thought maybe we'd publicly discuss what's going on instead of maybe just pass over it. So it's kind of a, so people don't have--
Absolutely, so--
--the public being aware.
Okay. So the EIC has an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to fund infrastructure for their Mariposa subdivision. And they granted a, they gave them a grant of 2.26 million dollars. And Habitat has been diligently working through their process, and they're going to expend those dollars for their infrastructure by June of this year. And per the agreement that we have set up, that is supposed to be separated out into two fiscal years. And so what essentially would happen is their contractors would finish that 2.2 million dollars worth of work in June, and Habitat would have to wait until October at this point to avail themselves to that second tranche of funding. Now, when finance allot's that money to a project, they separate it out, and so the funding is there. So it's not an issue for finance to amend that piece. And then the second is if Habitat were to somehow take back some of those homes as a part of it, there's a provision added into it saying that those homes by EIC, if they were the owners, could only sell them at that incremental increase to the property, so thereby continuing and becoming a part of the covenants and restrictions of the HOAs.
Okay, that's good.
I'll answer your question. If you're satisfied with that answer--
I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the Economic Development Grant Agreement with--
I'll second.
There's a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Now we're on 4F. It says Mr. Burrow, but I don't see him here.
I can handle this one, sir.
Go ahead.
So this is, and I'm going to bring up something from Martin here on this one. What you have in your packet is a bridged version of what we want you to see. And so we apologize for that, because it lists two items, high-density storage and lab equipment, and it lists Exhibit A and Exhibit B. And so I'm going to go into Exhibit A and Exhibit B right here. Let's see. So this is for the Public Safety Facility. This is a change order to move this purchase into the purview of Burn Construction. And so the first is the high-density storage that would go into the, basically the evidence room. And so it's the installation of that equipment and Burn managing that. And the second piece is the lab equipment for things that the police chief would have to help me explain. But they're long lead items, and so we're now to the point in our procurement where we're, we bought the furniture, that is, the tables, the chairs, the desks, et cetera. And we have that on order. The last pieces of the furniture were things like refrigerators, trash cans, high-density storage, those things that are not, you can't buy them in one place necessarily. And so we're evaluating those last sort of fifty or sixty purchases. But these two specifically, we want Burn to make sure that they're doing the installation, because there's connections throughout. They're going to have to, they'll have to, for this high-density storage equipment, they will have to, they're going to put rails into the evidence rooms, and these are going to be on racks. Or the only way I can describe it is when I was at the library in college, you hit the rollers and it moves it over, right? And they're going to be very, very tall. It's kind of in the highest, highest ceiling we have in the building. And again, the second piece is the lab equipment. We have the attachments listed here, saved nicely in our folder, and we don't have them on your agenda packet, so I apologize for that piece.
Anyway, these are, things are budgeted, just moving them into Burn.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. This is all, this is all part of, part of the procurement process that we're going through for everything, and yes, it's a budgeted item.
I'll answer your question.
I would move that we approve the change order for the Kerrville Public Safety Facility as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And it passes. Thank you kindly. Item 5A, would you mind reading that in, Joe?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-08, second reading. An ordinance changing the zoning of a property known as 620 Webster Avenue, consisting of part of Lot 49 and Lots 15 and 51, Block 14 of the Parsons Edition, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A to a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton's available for questions if we have any. I will say that I did walk the neighborhood the other day and look forward to seeing this door opened up, should this pass. All right, any questions for Mr. Paxton or the applicant?
I just want to remind you what I said before, which was I want to make sure kids are safe that typically play in the streets sometimes around there. So I'll be watching, and if there's anything I can do to help you, if you have any questions at all, just reach out to me.
Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-08, one second reading.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Opposed? It passes 4-1. Item 6A, Ms. Barron's, are you ready?
Good evening.
Oh, there we go, we do have it.
Yep, there we are. I got on the right meeting tonight, y'all will be happy to know. That was a technical problem on my part last time, so apologize for that. So I'm going to kind of give you not a long presentation, but just a little bit more than I give you on a monthly as we finish the second quarter, so through March of 2025. Just a quick update on economic-- Just a quick update on economic trends, I'm sure you guys are all seeing this as it's happening, and the effects on the economy from everything going on right now. Inflation did drop a little bit more, you can see there, but the Fed did hold in April, you know, they first estimated we were going to have a couple of drops in 2025, but we'll kind of watch in to see what happens in May and future months. Gas prices holding steady, and we really track those, because that is a driver for a lot of supply chain things that we experience in the city, not just gasoline and vehicles, but especially on the water fund side. So, we watch that pretty closely, but still staying right there where it has been the last few months. Couple of things I wanted to note as we start talking about 2026 budget, which we are knee deep in on our side, and you guys will be seeing a lot more of that coming, but just things that we're thinking about for '26 is, of course, implications and consideration of tariffs, what's that going to look like? We've been talking in our own finance communities about what cities across the state are kind of doing and how they're handling that. So, more to come on that as we see the impacts of that in the future. We expect it, of course, on vehicles and equipment. Construction is the biggest one that is seeing an impact, or we expect to see an impact, and then technology components, which we don't spend a whole lot of money on as far as hardware, but that will impact us some. Reduction in interest revenue, but we continue to talk about that. You know, we're going to have less cash on hand, because we're finishing off a great project that we've been investing some money from. And then just with the rates dropping a little bit, we'll see a little bit less there. Volatility, sales tax revenue, and we'll talk about that in a minute, probably increases in group health, definitely in liability, so just some areas to look at. And then, of course, always looking at salaries and wages and what the implications are going to be there of the moves we've made over the past few years, and then what other cities and counties are kind of doing to stay competitive in the market, really just for staffing needs and those kind of things. Budget to date, you know, we've seen some leveling, and we talk about that, you know, every month, that we're seeing some leveling with the economy. I think part of that is just we've really been proactive in the last few years about budgeting what we need and been, you know, more realistic about what we expect to happen. And prices aren't dropping, but we haven't seen really big jumps in the last year, I would say, but we're really watching to see what's going on in the economy right now and how that's going to change in the next few months. And departments have done a really good job of rightsizing and really saying, this is what our needs are, this is operationally where we need to be and what we need to do to do that, and then kind of separating out some of our larger capital expenses has been really helpful for us when we're budgeting. So, more to come on budget for sure in the next few months, just kind of wanted to give you a little, little look. Interest revenue, and this is all through March, year over year, so graphically, just looking at where we've been year over year, and Trina and I actually talked to a group of Striner Accounting students earlier, and we were looking at interest from '21 and '[921.62][921.62]'22, when we were earning like a quarter of a percent. And so, looking at that in '23 and '24, where we were upwards of five, five and a half to six. So, volatility in the market for sure, but just know that investments, safety is our first priority, so everything that we invest in is very safe and secure. We don't invest in anything that might have any risk to the city. So, we'll continue to look for best market rates where we can and take advantage of rates while we can, but this isn't a huge revenue source for us, but there's been so much movement in it in the last few years, we've just been tracking it pretty close. General funds, so everything really is tracking pretty close to budget on revenues, and we'll talk about sales tax just in a minute, but property tax, we're at 94% collected, which kind of is about what we expect to see for this time of the year. Sales tax is ahead of budget, but again, a couple of notes on that, as we talked about a large audit payment that we had back in February that kind of caused anomaly there. Franchise fees, everything's really, is really tracking really close to budget estimate. So, we use a five-year history when we're trying to decide where we should be with our budget, and then we remove any anomalies so that we can kind of get a pretty good feel for what the trend should be. Expenses overall better than budget, you know, it's only two quarters in, and there's still a lot of things that are happening, but so far, you know, we're tracking, you know, I think, pretty healthy on the general fund.
I want to ask you a question about that.
Yes.
There have been some vacancies, so I was curious about, did we absorb those salaries somewhere, and where would that be?
They're in, it's in the personnel line, and so if there are vacancies right now, it's sitting there. So, we don't, as a rule, we don't move any personnel expenses to other line items, those go to cover other personnel costs if we need to. So, we kind of make those moves as we get closer to year end, just depending on what each department has.
Can you tell me which column it would be reflected in?
Yes. So, if you look in FY '25, year-to-date actual, that dark blue right there, you can see your personnel expenses at about 14.2 million. So, we're about $300,000 better than budget right now.
Okay. That's what I thought, that was in the measure.
Yes, yes, that's right. And then the far right is just the change year over year. So, we're more than we were at the same time last year, but better than where we anticipated we would be. But again, to your point, we do have several vacancies, and we just leave that there, and we address it as we get further into the fourth quarter.
We're hoping to fill those vacancies.
That's right. We're hoping to, because that does have an impact on overtime and some other things. So, you know, just because we have salary savings here...
Just looking for money, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. So, we leave personnel expenses alone as a rule until we get closer to year end.
That's a good, that's a good idea, good plan.
Yeah, you never know on that one. On the property tax, this is just kind of a graphical view of what we talked about. There's your budget on the left in the dark blue, and the green is your collection percent, so 94% collected to date, which again, based on a five-year history, that's right, tracking right on where we feel like we should be at this point in time. And the chart on the right is just revenues through March, year over year, from property tax. This is M and O only, and then the tax rate, just for, just for visual. Sales tax, and we talked about this a little bit, I think categorically, we're very consistent. So, when we're doing, looking at trends, we know which areas are going to produce the most revenue for sales tax categorically. Now, with that being said, we budgeted 3% less in '25 than we did in '24, knowing kind of the way things were trending. We're better than budget right now, but we did have a little over a $200,000 audit payment. So, if you kind of look at the way things were, it's super volatile when you look month over month from one year to the next, because we really look at a more of a 12-month rolling average kind of look, but it's a little scary when you look at, you know, October, you know, is 18% behind, November's up, December's up, February was up substantially, but that's where that audit payment was, and then not on this sheet, but April's 13% down. So, is that an indicator? We don't know, one month is really not anything to build trends on. So, we're just really watching sales tax, because it's been a little bit all over the place this year. This is just graphical view, basically what we just told you, and what I like about this is it kind of gives us a little bit of comfort, then when we're doing budget estimates, that they line up with where we actually are. So, your dark blue line is the budget, and then the green line in the middle is the budget estimate, and then the yellow is the actual. So, when we look at revenues compared to budget estimate, I like to look at it this way, because my eye can go, okay, does that look like it's in line or reasonable? And so, if there's anything unreasonable, usually that's cause for us to go and check it. But I like it when it looks reasonable, so this is just kind of a graphical view for you to see revenues collected over time. And then we give you the same thing on expenses, just to say, compared to budget, this is where we think we should be, and this is where we are, just so you can kind of see it from a little bit different view. So, consistency really is what we're looking for here compared to where we think we should be. On the water fund, the good news is, and I told you this last month, I hope that I will tell you this for the rest of the year, the water model that we have reconstructed last year is working. I mean, overall, revenues are better than budget for the year. This time last year, we were already shown a deficit for the entire year, so it was, I was already getting real nervous about this time last year. It's working, we haven't seen any kind of impact through March of any sewer averaging changes, so those won't come really until about May, because those bills didn't change until April. So, overall, our sewer averaging for customers went down as an average. Now, how that looked on the whole, we really won't know, and that, that's just water use in those winter averaging months, so, which is good, that's what it's supposed to do. Expenses really tracking close to budget here again, so, you know, through quarter two, we're still early, but, but just watching it closely. And I just gave you this for the same reason, just so you can kind of see budget, budget estimate, and then where we actually are. You can see the interest miscellaneous, obviously it's a little higher, and it doesn't show much on here, that's an insignificant, really, piece, and we've just been talking about interest a lot. Those first two really are our primary drivers, they're, you know, 97% of the overall revenue, so those are really the categories we look at the most. Same thing on expenses, so everything is tracking right, close to budget estimate, which is, which is really what we want to see. It's just sometimes seeing it graphically gives you a little bit different view of what's actually happening. Development services, so funny this came up this way, but Drew and I were just talking about this yesterday, about the unknown and unpredictability of development services revenue, because you just don't know, it's so project and development driven, because this time last year, we were behind budget, and right now, we're tracking really close to budget. So, that's good news, in that you can see that we're worse, I mean, we're better than the budget estimate, but we'll see how the rest of the year goes, because that, you know, could change in a few months. But as of right now, we're right on track with revenues, so that's good news. This, just kind of wanted to point that out, and you can look at, this is through March, year over year, so you can see the volatility. You just, you just don't know, it's, it's really depending on what's going on in the community, and it's hard to predict. So, when we're building revenues out for the development services budget, we're kind of using historical plus things we know to be true with some good kind of hopefully math in there somewhere. So, Drew and I have been working on what that's going to look like for next year as we go forward in the budget. Occupancy tax, struggling here in this area, and we've talked about this a little bit. We did bring our budget down compared to last year, but we're still tracking behind, so about $150,000 behind where we thought we would be at this time of the year. We have some pretty significant decreases with some larger hoteliers, so we're looking at that just to see kind of what's going on. We've been talking with Julie over at CVB to see what they're reporting out as far as travel and those kind of things, so working closely with them. You'll see that transfer out for the Library Memorial there for HHHC, still sitting there. When we need that cash, then we'll move it over to the project. That project is moving along pretty good right now, so when we get to the point to where we've expended the money already set aside, then we will transfer this out, and you'll see that happen. And this is the same thing, just historical look through March, year over year, so you can see this significant drop-off there in 2025 year-to-date. So, happy to report, we've wrapped up the audit and financial report, that felt really good to kind of put that in the book, some were knee-deep in budget, maybe taller than knee-deep in budget right now. So, we'll be bringing you little pieces of that until we really start more in-depth budget conversations, but certainly open to any feedback or comments that you might have as we're working through that project. All of your budget workshops are outlined here for you, including the presentation of the budget, and then also the scheduling of both readings of the ordinance.
I thought the City Council first budget workshop was June 21st, am I wrong?
I'll go back and look that. We worked through several iterations of that one, and I think that might have been a timing thing, but I'll go back and double-check that.
Okay.
And look at that calendar.
I'd like to know, because I do have some...
Okay. Let me go out, let me go back and look, because I know I've sent that calendar out, but I'll go back and double-check that.
Very much.
Okay, of course. Any other questions or comments?
Other questions?
No.
All right, make sure, let's double-check the calendar.
Yep, I'll do that one before I leave today.
All right, thank you.
I have it on mine that way.
Okay. I have 17 there, 21.
Oh, 17 and 50, my calendar's just...
21st is a Saturday, I'm being told.
Okay, so it is 17. Okay, thank you.
What's wrong with Saturday?
We can do it. Y'all tell me when you're coming, and I'll let you know.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was a safe offer.
All right, board appointments, 7A, appointment to the Joint Airport Board. McKenney, do you want to take the lead on that?
Oh, you know, I...
Our computers are having troubles tonight, so...
Okay, so, I would make a motion that we appoint Ben Strebek as the Airport Board Member.
Name again?
Ben Strebek, S-T-R-E-B-E-C-K. Might not be sp, set, yeah, right.
And I'll second that nomination. Any discussion? All right. I have a motion as second, no discussion, all in favor, so vote. All right, looks like your work's cut out for you soon. Next is the Parks and Rec Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Harris.
Six vacancies, eight applications were received, speaking to applicants. I'm going to make the motion to reappoint Dalton Dover and Lynn Paulo, and then appoint Linda Abels, Colin Gray, Ryan Sprayberry, and Katie Capel, Koppel, excuse me.
I would second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and they are hereby appointed. Appointment to the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One.
I would like to make the motion that we appoint Laura Four of four committees.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, so vote, Ms. Four is appointed. All right, we have two items on our executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session, and they're on two separate statutes.
I will make the motion to go into executive session on item number 8A for section 551.087, and for 8B, item, or 551.074.
Second.
Been made and seconded, any discussion? All right, to vote, it passes unanimously. We're going to go up to executive session, and I will try very hard to remember to come back down and get us out. All right, we're coming out of executive session, and we do have one item on which we're going to take action, and I think Councilmember Place One has a motion.
Okay, after a lot of nice conversation, Pablo, look me in the eye here. I want to authorize the City Manager to draft a development agreement with Whiskey Springs to include incentives. Did I leave anything out? Okay.
I would second your motion, ma'am.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. That's just the start of the work, I believe. 8:03, are, sorry, are there any items for future agendas?
Yes, there is. I would like to add to the May 27th agenda, a Main Street City Program presentation for a full-time manager. We've been doing a lot of research, we'd like to just present that to council, and we hopefully will have a job description, a budget, and any questions you might have regarding what is a Main Street manager, and what, what does that involve, and who's paying for it, and all of that, we'll try to present that. But we need a little more time, so not May 13th, May 27th.
Would you like it on workshop or regular session?
Probably workshop would be better.
I'll second her motion, workshop sounds fine. Any other items or future agendas? All right, 8:03, we are adjourned.